All right, so I think we're gonna get ready to start. This is the planning board meeting of Monday, October 27th, 2025. Please note that this meeting is being made available to the public through an audio recording, which will be used to ensure an accurate record of proceedings produced in the minutes of the meeting. All comments made in open session will be recorded. PAC TV is providing this service live on Comcast Xfinity Government Access Channel 9. Those without cable, visit YouTube for live streaming. Okay, we don't have anyone participating remotely. So at 7:00 PM, the first item of business is a continued public hearing for subdivision number 2502, continued from September 8th, 2025, and October 6th, 2022, on the application of Roman Catholic Archbishop of Boston of 66 Brook Drive, Braintree, Mass., for the approval of a definitive subdivision plan entitled 145 Washington Street subdivision. The proposed subdivision is located at 145 Washington Street and 0 Misty Meadow Road, Pembroke, and consists of four new single-family homes on approximately 12.16 acres. Property is in the residential zoning district and the historic overlay district and is shown on Assessor's Map D14, lots 18 and 131. So, we've been through pretty much the whole subdivision plan, and is there anything you want to go over before we vote on conditions?
Yeah, briefly. Eric Shoemaker, McKenzie Engineering Group, we last met on September 8th. Since then, we received an engineering peer review letter from Merrell that was dated September 1st, and we addressed those engineering comments with the response letter. We worked through those comments, we made the revisions to the plan accordingly, and you should have our latest plan set with revision date October 14th, 2025, incorporating those changes, as well as our response letter dated September 22nd. After we received, after we sent out our response letter and revised plans, we just received some quick email comments from Merrell additionally on October 10th, and we addressed those as well. Quick overview of the changes is, we added some existing homes and septic systems around the site where it's shown in our view of the plan here. We provided a cut and fill analysis. We added an additional catch basin on the driveway down here on Lot 6. That's gonna capture the impervious area of Lot 7 and Lot 6 and provide adequate TSS removal and treatment. Before, we just had a swale going into the forbay. We provide granite inlets at all catch basins along the proposed roadway in accordance with the construction details noted in your subdivision rules and regulations. We provided some more information relating to streetlights in the plans. We show those schematically at the moment on the grading and drainage plan, and we provided detail as well. We added a street planting table on this grading and drainage plan down at the bottom. In total, we have 15 trees. The species vary, and they're gonna be placed along the side of the roadway. We provided the lot characterization number, the LCN calculation, and ensured that the LCNs of every lot is below 11, as noted in your bylaw. Yep, so on the site grading and drainage plan, we have the intersection site distance lines. We have 377 feet in this direction on Misty Meadow Road, and you can see out to the intersection on Washington Street in that northerly direction. We added some justification for our coverover pipe, the HDPE as well as the concrete. I can get into that if needed, but we're going for manufacturer's recommendations for both of those pipes. That's, that's pretty much it. The other change to note was, I added Sheet C5 to the plan set, and that just shows a profile, plan and profile of this drain line into the basin at the request of Merrell Engineering. So that's just a quick summary of the changes. I can go into greater detail if any of the planning board members have comments or questions.
And all the waivers that were requested, you've gone back and forth, one of them being that pipe.
Yeah, I think I'd like to hear from DPW on switching from
Concrete?
RCP to HDPE.
Okay. Any?
I don't recall it's ever allowing that before.
What's your concern?
How long it lasts.
Generally?
I do, I do a lot of pipe inspections, and I've seen them fail more often than I've seen concrete.
Have you?
The HDPE?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I haven't found that.
I've just seen it like slip a lot of joints more often than concrete does, stuff like that.
So what would you recommend?
Concrete.
Yeah, if you, if you're going that shallow, what, foot and a half maybe with cover?
Yeah, foot and a half was our shallowest pipe, and these are all 12-inch pipes, 12-inch HDPE for the most part from the catch basins. I believe the larger one is 18 into the basin. But we're going with the manufacturer's recommendations, which is over a foot of cover. I generally provide HDPE where I, where I can. I think it's easier to construct for, for the construction workers in the field, and I haven't seen any issues myself with durability.
Well, in the event of a failure, who would take, who would do the repair?
Um, it
I mean, that's your question, right?
If the town accepts the road, it'll be their, their responsibility to replace it, so.
And how expensive is a HDPE repair compared to a concrete repair? Now, we can make the assumption that the concrete won't, won't have a, you know, break, but is it relatively inexpensive to replace the HDP?
I almost think the repair would be the same.
It would be the same, yeah, it would be the cost of digging, the whole shot, the road down, cops and mess and
Taking everything out, okay.
Repaving it and all that.
Gotcha. The material doesn't really make, make a big difference.
Not to the repair, yeah.
Okay. And, and the reason for going to the HDPE versus the concrete, is that a cost and a, was that a cost consideration?
Well, I provided it in the waiver, I provided some justification there. Let me find that quickly.
Typically, that's what I've seen since the cost. It is a significant cost, and as Eric mentioned, constructability, it's easier to move around the site than it is concrete pipe. But I would recommend if DPW wants the concrete, I would go with Class 5 with that shallow. Anything under 18 inches should be Class 5
Okay.
Concrete.
But if the, the reduced, if there's a reduced need for heavy lifting equipment and lowering labor and, and equipment costs, wouldn't that exist in a replacement too?
Yeah, but I think your cost more are the excavation.
Okay.
But yeah, so you'd have probably a little bit of cost savings, the same that you would with the installation, but in the repair, you're excavating, removing the pipe, and then you're putting it in.
And what would typically cause that, you know, a HDPE pipe to maybe fail?
They can deflect a lot easier, concrete pipe's rigid, so they can deflect and then the joints can pull apart
Okay.
and stuff like that, and they can wind up holding water where they sag a little bit.
Or someone with a skid steer can drive over one.
What's that?
Or someone with a skid steer could drive over it when the soil's flat and crack it, crush it.
Well, it's up to the board. What, what would you like to do in this case?
It's a lot of linear feet we're talking about, that's for sure.
Do we, do we wanna do this, approve these conditions pending approval by the DPW with the HDPE pipe?
Yeah. I'm tending, myself, I wouldn't go with it.
Debbie, you seeing more people go to that? And so it's pretty much common use now across the board?
It is, yeah. It's, it's a standard, it is a typical standard waiver request to replace concrete with HDPE pipe.
And we could add a condition if needed for the pipes to be inspected in the field if, you know, constructability is gonna be a concern because
It's more what happens, you know, 20 years down the road, if, if the road's accepted.
Mm-hmm. So a, a big
I mean, I'm not for it. The rest of the board can do whatever they want, but I would definitely recommend getting buy-in from DPW before we do that.
And if they bought in, then?
Be up to the board. I would probably be the B and O, though.
Okay. Well, I'd like to get this finished tonight, if we could. I mean, I'd like to do it pending an approval by
Sure, that's fine.
DPW.
That's fine.
All right?
Crafted, so that would be the condition?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so we're gonna amend that waiver, just say pending DPW approval of use of that pipe, all right?
Okay.
Or the pipe to be chosen by DPW.
Or the pipe to be chosen by DPW. That may be a better way to do it. Okay, so let's do that. What about the other waivers? Have you got a chance to read through the waivers that were requested as part of these conditions?
The rest are fine, the proposing guardrail would have extra slots and stuff like that, so I think that's fine.
Okay. Anything else, Deb? I mean, you've read through the conditions and the waiver requests.
Yeah, they added the waivers that I thought needed to be added.
Okay.
So I assume that Eric's agreeing with me on those. And they did address all my comments, so at this point, I think it's pretty clean.
Okay. Well, usually the board votes the waivers and then approves the conditions. So I was suggesting that a motion be made, let's see, to grant the waivers requested on the cover page of the drawings by McKenzie Engineering Group, dated June 16th, 2025, revised September 22nd, 2025, and October 14th, 2025, and accepted by the planning board on July 17th, 2025, October 1st, 2025, and October 14th, 2025. The board grants the, those waivers as previously voted and approved by this board. So we've already done a vote for that? Did I get that right?
Are we putting in subject to approval the DPW
Yes, as, as amended tonight.
Yeah.
All right? So that's, that's a motion, if someone wants to move it.
Yeah, I'll, I'll second.
Well, you, you said so moved. Okay, now I'll, I'll take a second.
So that I don't have to say
I'll second it.
There you go. That's why I was reading it for you.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that.
All right.
Can you second it?
Alicia?
I second it.
Oh, you seconded, okay. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Now, on, on the final conditions of approval, do I have a motion to accept the final conditions of approval and to sign them? Oh, one more thing, I just wanted to ask one more question. On the
Do we use a motion to close the public hearing?
Yeah, we'd have to do that, too. You're right. And we should do that first. But let me just ask a question about number 22. Because we approved this for three, for two years. Are we comfortable with that? That's kind of a short period of time, isn't it?
I, I really don't know the construction schedule, to be honest. I, I have a feeling they do wanna get this, you know, kinda going.
Yeah.
Is there, I, I would always be open to an option to make it longer to, you know?
Yeah.
I would. By the time they get trees and grass strips to grow and stuff like that, it's, it's not gonna happen in two years.
Yeah.
There's always an extra year for them to get the trees and grass done.
All right. And I don't think there's any statutory requirement of two years versus three years?
Not that I'm aware of.
Yeah, all right. So I, I'll, I'll accept a motion to extend number 22 from two years to three years if you would.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Now, now we'll go to closing the public hearing.
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, now I'll accept a motion to accept the list of final conditions of approval.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Sure, thank you.
Would you like me to contact the DPW directly?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Sue, that, that'll work for you?
Great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Excellent.
I, I really like to say too, that way I know for future projects if we refer a different material.
Okay, next up is an informal meeting with Brandon Barry, Pete, Merrell Engineers and Land Surveyors, on a proposed project involving firehouse gas station located at 154 Center Street.
Give me a second to set up here. Thank you. For the record, my name is Brandon Barry with Merrell Engineering. We're here representing the owners of 154 Center Street. We've been working with them as they're looking to redevelop the portion of their site to better suit their business needs. The property is located on the eastern side of Center Street, right at the intersection of Mata Keeset Street. The lot contains just under 27,000 square feet, is currently occupied by gas station use. They have a canopy with some pump islands at the front, and then a building that has a retail component, and then also some garage bays more central to the site. They have two full access drives on either edge of the frontage, to Center Street, which is how people access the site, and then there's some parking along the perimeter. What they are looking to do is just construct a new building behind the old one. It would be just on over 2,300 square feet, would contain a retail component and a slightly expanded garage bay. They would be going from two bays to three, and expanding the width, the depth of the building so they could accommodate a few more cars and storage within the building there. The building as we're proposing it is compliant with all the side and rear setbacks. We are non-compliant with the front setback, just with the canopy and pump islands at the front of the site. We are looking to make a slight change to the access to the site. We'll be taking the full access drive closer to the intersection and making that just a one-way into the site, then the one further away from the intersection will be maintained as full access. We think that's just better not to have so much traffic at the intersection, and it works better with the parking layout that we're showing here. We are showing nine striped spaces, five along the side, and then four along the rear, where we're determining that six are required, so we are compliant with parking. The pump station and the tanks associated with it would remain in their existing place today as part of the project, so no work to that would be done. They are hoping to construct the building behind their existing one, so that they can build that, maintain operations of that business, and then when they demo the building, they'll be able to, you know, bring the new building online. They like to keep the site open while they are working on it.
So their plan is to demo that front building?
The front building will go away, but we are locating it so that hopefully they can start their construction in the back, keep, you know, the cars being serviced and keep their use open until it's time to transition to their new one.
And no proposal to move the, the pumping?
Not at this time. It's not part of their, their plans that they've, they've brought to us.
Okay. Cause it's non-conforming now.
It is non-conforming, yes. And so we, we are very preliminary. We've just kinda got a site layout put together, have done some basic due diligence to try and determine, you know, what the, the path to getting an approval on this is.
Sure.
And Sue had recommended that coming to just meet with you informally, get some preliminary feedback that we can incorporate into a layout before we proceed forward with our design, and then just confirm what we're looking for, for approvals. With our existing non-conformances on the site, we believe we'll need a special permit to continue or modify or change those uses, and then we would need a site plan approval from the planning board. I was not sure, I believe the special permit for non-conforming uses or setbacks is through the ZBA, but I wasn't sure if that could be combined when we're coming to you guys for site plan approval, if we do have
I'm not sure exactly. Well, this is an extension of a non-conforming use. I mean, they already have this use there.
Yep.
I don't see a problem in getting a special permit for that. I think it's gonna be
You're making, you're actually making it more conforming.
Well, with the setback for that building, yeah, but you still have those pumps up.
Yeah, the pump islands are
They'll be non-conforming.
Are still staying there. I do know, it's, it's a question that we have asked, and it's not something that they are considering at, for this application to move the building, but it is something that as we've looked at moving that building, we've tried to accommodate that if they were to relocate that, they could do it, you know, more central to the site and put it back within there. So I think, you know, again, not part of this, or I'm not even sure if they do have plans for like a phase redevelopment where those could move.
Sure.
But it's at least something we've considered that if they are able to move the building, that kinda gives them the flexibility to then in a phase two, move the pump islands.
They just wanna stay in business while they're doing this.
I think that's why they would like to phase it that way, so that they can keep operating.
I mean, that makes sense.
Yep.
They are adding parking spots, correct?
Where
Those aren't there now.
There are parkings, there's not a lot of well-defined and striped parking on the lot.
No, yeah.
It's, no, not really. I, I was just out there, I met the owners, and there are, there is some striping in the spaces over here. So we are maintaining those, but then we're getting, you know, some good where that retail component's gonna be a little bit more, you know, a space that people may go to. We're getting some defined striping there, including accessible spaces as well.
So they're gonna approve the stormwater on the site and everything else as part of the site plan?
Yep. As part of the site plan approval, we'd be coming to get, you know, all the requirements. We don't have any of that laid out, it's really just this plan we've put together, but, you know, we would have new utility connections, we review the grading, stormwater management systems on the site.
And they wouldn't have that problematic lift outside anymore?
Nope, that's, you know, they have two lifts interior, and then the problematic one that's outside, they want three lit, you know, three lift bays.
Well, that's an improved, that's a marked improvement.
Yep.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I mean, we'd, we'd be happy to entertain a site plan, absolutely.
Okay.
As far as the issue of who the special
Probably still have to go to center protection though as well, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
That's a separate board?
No, it's us.
It's us.
That's you, that's just part of it. I know when I look, I look through there, there's
Yeah, I mean, you do, your signage, I mean, he's gonna change any sign, I mean, he's already done some signage change there without coming to us, but
So, we, we
There was a previous approval here for, there was a previous approval for center protection.
Yeah, but he changed some signs and stuff recently.
That's something we had noted to them in kind of our, our initial write-up and due diligence, was that this is that center protection overlay, so when we do submit for site plan review, not only is it site plan, but you guys are looking at the architectural style of the building, so we'll need to show you what that's going to look like, and that will need to conform, and we can also revisit, you know, any signage that's on the site, let them know, you know, hey, some of that may need to move as part of this, so let's get all that included into your site plan and approved as part of this application.
So is this gonna mean that another septic system's gonna be installed as well? Cause if they're gonna try to work the back building while the front building's still active, you're gonna have to have two septic systems on the site?
Yeah, or, you know, if we can, I believe the septic systems behind what they were using is kind of like a garden outback. I think we would look to try and maintain that as is, and if we needed to relocate that, you know, we would either look to provide a new one, or, you know, get to that point when we got there. We hadn't looked too deep into the utilities at this point in time, or does it fit? Ideally, we would like to reuse the existing septic system, and that may mean the building needs to shift a few feet forward to maintain proper setbacks, and then hopefully, you know, we can just tie right into the existing tank and other infrastructure there to reuse that system.
Okay. And this is my question. Yep. Any other questions? Nope, no.
So, understanding utilities, stormwater, making sure that we're compliant with signage, go through the process, site plan review with the accommodation for that center protection district, and Sue, maybe you and I can have a conversation about where that special permit for non-conforming uses goes through.
Yeah. But they wanna keep that going during construction of the building in the back, so they can keep their business going.
Right. And then after the decommit, is that all going to be pavement?
It would be, it would primarily be pavement through, through that area where the building is now. And that's how we would, we would account for, is that that'll all be paved for, you know, circulation around the site.
It's a lot of circulation.
Yeah. Yeah, it's something, it's something that we've talked to them about, and they haven't, you know, it's the, I think, you know, one scenario is that it all becomes paved, the other scenario is where they may consider, you know, where the building is, if they are considering potentially relocating the pump structures there, we could outline that with curbing and just kinda keep that as like a, a dirt or landscaped area for the time being until they're ready to put the canopies, or if they decide to move the canopies back there, if they don't need all the pavement. But that's something that we've, we've posited to the owner and waiting for them to kinda make a final of make a final determination. We want to just make sure that we weren't going to come in and there weren't any major red flags on the site before we proceeded with our full design plans.
Okay. Good. We look forward to a site plan.
Awesome. Well, I appreciate you guys' time tonight, and Sue will be in touch as we get everything pulled together, and hopefully in a couple of months, we're back here with a full application.
Sounds good.
Building next door, turn down. Oh, sorry. That's my wish.
Okay, so next, Form A lots for David West, 59 Barker Street, map D-11 to 27 and D-12 to 3A. This board's been able to take a look at those quickly. Just two, just two, just two lots are being proposed here, right? One with an existing house on it and a second for a new house. Both fronted on Barker Street.
150 and 154 frontage.
69,000 and 65,000, 66,000, about. Anyone want to take a look? Looks good.
Looks good.
Yeah. So do we want a motion to sign off on the Form A lots for
59 Barker?
59 Barker Street, Pembroke.
So moved.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, are we signing off on this here, or the bylaw?
Yeah, in the bylaw.
Okay. All right, so any other routine administrative matters, Sue, besides the approval of the minutes?
Uh, no, just a few things, signatures, that's it.
Okay, so we're going to be doing signatures? All right. So there are minutes in front of you from the last meeting?
I make a motion to accept the minutes from the October 6th meeting, that's presented.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. And that's all we have to do is sign stuff?
Yep.
All right, so I'll accept a, unless there's any other business before the board or any other business to be discussed. Hearing none, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Do I have a second? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.